Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the city employee at the back of the room. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to let council know your opinion without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council Meeting stream live on Facebook, YouTube, X, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order October 27, 2025. We've got, let's see, Benita, are you online? No. Councilmember Beckles, are you on?
Councilmember Beckles, you may need to unmute.
I know she was talking to us earlier.
I unmuted.
All right, we're good to go. All right, thank you. With that, would you please join Councilmember Kano in the pleasure of allegiance and invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, we gather this evening with thankful hearts for the many blessings you have bestowed upon our city. As we begin this meeting, may your presence and guidance be with us. We are grateful for the significant investments being made in Goodyear to bring growth and development. Give us the wisdom to guide the city forward into its destiny and be excellent stewards of the public purse and trust. We give thanks for the change of seasons that allows us to host so many events that brings the community together. We honor our dedicated police and fire personnel and those in the military who serve and protect us each day, often at great personal risk. Grant them safety, strength, and courage as they carry out their essential duties. May they always feel the support and appreciation of the community they serve, and may your protective hand be upon them in every circumstance. We offer this prayer with humble gratitude and hope. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, thank you. Let's see, next on the agenda, approve the appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions and committees. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not, Mayor. If I just may make one clarification, there was a typo reflected in the card that should have been listed as Walter Coley rather than Robert Coburn Lee.
Okay, thank you. City, will the council please enter a motion in a second to approve the appointments and reappointments to the Council Compensation Committee and Citizen Water Advisory Committees as recommended by the Council Subcommittee on the Boards and Commissions Committee? I got a motion in a second. Any, we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Beckles, you got any comments?
No comments.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please open the voting?
Councilmember Beckles, please state your vote for the record.
Aye.
Passes seven zero unanimously. City Clerk, would you please come on down, I guess, and administer the oath of office?
For those in attendance, being appointed to the Council Compensation Committee and Citizen Water Advisory Committee, would you please join me in the well? Duties of Commissioner? According to the best of my ability? So I do affirm. Congratulations.
Any comments from the dais? Go ahead.
I just want to thank all of the residents who have stepped forward to serve on our boards and commissions. As you know, they all serve as volunteers, no pay, but they get a great big appreciation from all of the council and the rest of the residents. We appreciate you taking time to want to be a part of the Goodyear family every day, and we appreciate you wanting to be on one of our boards and commissions, and we wish you a very enjoyable and informative session for whatever your board and commission you're on. Thank you.
The only thing I want to add, not much more onto that, but what makes our community great is the number of people who are willing to step up and serve, and we never have any problems filling those positions. So with that, congratulations and great luck. Thank you. All right, with that, now we have time for members of the public who wish to address the City Council. Any non-agenda items within the jurisdiction of Goodyear City Council? Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anybody in the audience wish to speak? All right, seeing none, will the city clerk please read consented agenda items two through seven by title only?
Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, approval of 2026 council meeting calendar. Item four, approved budget amendments and related expenditure authority. Item five, approve the IGA with Buckeye Union High School District Number 201 for school resource officer services. Item six, approval of settlement agreement with Forsight Design and Construction, Inc. And item seven, approve employment agreement with presiding municipal judge.
Thank you. Anybody wish to remove an item? Seeing none, does anyone in council wish? Okay, we have a motion in a second up on the board. So with that, can we open up the voting?
Councilmember Beckles, please state your vote for the record.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you. All right, next up, we have one public hearing tonight. Our first public hearing is to consider a use permit for a convenience use drive-through east of northeast corner of West Indian School Road and North Cervel Avenue within Palm Valley Phase Five. Open the public hearing, please introduce yourself there, sir.
We don't have it either, so we don't know what you're going to say.
I think they just sent back the cavalry, so hopefully soon, all right?
Oh, yay, we have something.
Can you use that overhead there? See if you can work it? Yeah, yeah, we'll walk behind you.
Christian, I have it on my computer if you want to use my computer.
Hey, okay. Dan, please don't.
Zooming out a little bit further, you can see that it is just north of Pebble Creek, Phase Two. It is just south of a vacant lot that was approved for a storage that used permit has since expired. It is due west of a neighborhood Palm Valley Phase Five. It is due east of a McDonald's that is currently built, which is east of the large UPS facility. A little bit of history on the entitlement of this property. In 2003, this property was zoned C1, or the equivalency of that within Palm Valley. And in 2022, use permits were approved. One of the use permits was for that McDonald's that I mentioned, and one was also approved for that self-storage facility. Again, that use permit has since expired. This is the proposal for the convenience use drive-through. It is actually a 10,000-square-foot multi-tenant building. That building could accommodate two, or three, or four users. Currently, right now, you see there, they're showing three different users. And the users are not a part of the use permit itself, but what is part of the use permit is the convenience use drive-through portion of that. And you're actually hearing this case because the drive-through is within 500 feet of residential. The drive-through lane would accommodate nine cars or vehicles before the first stopping point. That exceeds the six minimum requirements before the first stopping point. And after the first stopping point, there are four vehicle queuing spaces, or five vehicle queuing spaces, which exceeds our minimum of four vehicle queuing spaces. The drive-through faces west towards McDonald's, and the drive-through itself is about 230 feet west of the nearest residential home. That is the speaker box as well. Sorry, the speaker box at 228 feet from the nearest residential unit. And the entrance to the drive-through here is about 100 feet west of the nearest residential home. For context, the McDonald's at Cervel and Yuma is about 148 to 164 feet from the residential home. These are the elevations for the McDonald's or for the drive-through. The building itself is 22 feet in height. That is below the C2 maximum of 30 feet. The elevations that will face Indian School are here, and I will point out that none of these users are confirmed or approved. And I'm also hearing that this will not be the tenant of the drive-through. So the southern-facing elevation will look like this minus a side. That faces Indian School. North-facing the vacant lot is this middle image here. East-facing the residential is this blank wall here. And then west-facing the McDonald's is where the drive-through window is meant to be determined drive-through. And again, the building can be divided into three or more stores. However, the drive-through has a cap of 50% of the building maximum for the use. That is something that should be improved. A neighborhood meeting was held for this project at the city. Residents were in attendance. One resident expressed opposition, and their concerns were related to the proximity of the speaker box to residential, the idling of cars and the noise of speakers or the volume those cars produce, the proximity to their homes, property values, and potential for trash over brats or bodies to become prevalent to that restaurant. And also that this is a neighborhood commercial center named the drive-through should be a neighborhood business. Another resident was in attendance and just had general questions about the building process. There are several stipulations that are attached to this use permit that the council wants to approve it. To highlight a couple, the drive-through must be in performance with our zoning ordinance 4218. So you will see a canopy added to cover the drive-through lane. There'll need to be a control to do anything of that nature. As I stated earlier, a maximum of this build, percentage of this building can be 50% new drive-through. So that does guarantee that there will be other retail users in the building and not just a 10,000 square foot drive-through. The hours of operation on this drive-through facility will be limited to 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That is similar to the McDonald's initial approval. I will note that council did extend that McDonald's drive-through hours to midnight. So you will be hearing McDonald's case again by April 2026 to determine if you want to keep the hours of operations as they were a referred fact of the use permit hours of operation. But in this case, it's similar to what McDonald's had to approve, which is the 5 to 10 p.m. requirement. The products and service deliveries will be limited between the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. So again, no truck deliveries overnight at this facility. That was a stipulation brought over from Cervel and Yuma. McDonald's is at the proximity of residential. Similar lighting stipulations to McDonald's. And then similar to that McDonald's, if they have a user in the building that generates food or orders, they will need to install a air scrubber. If it's, say, just coffee and they're not making food or pastries or whatnot that generate food orders, they will not have to install that. So that would be determined at the building's requirement space.
Is the mic not on? Oh, sorry. Apologize for that. And with that, staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the use permit subject to the stipulations.
All right, that's it for you?
Yes.
Now, I've got here the applicant wished to present, you know, at this point, but can the applicant wait to see what kind of questions? Maybe we'll bring you up then. How's that sound? Where's the applicant?
She's great with that.
Okay, is she fine with that?
Yes.
Okay, let's see, anybody in the audience like to speak other than the applicant right now? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Will the council enter a motion in a second to approve the use permit for a convenience use drive-through east of northeast corner of West Indian School Road and North Cervel Avenue within Palm Valley Phase? We'll open it, let's see, I've got a motion and a second. So we're opening it up for discussion, and I guess the first one up is Councilmember Terry. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Christian, just two quick questions on here. Stipulation as part of the setback from the neighborhood is trees. Can you just confirm that the trees are part of the stipulation with this project? That is correct?
Yes, every piece of landscaping between the actual pad site for the multi-tenant building and the residential wall will be completed as part of this use permit.
And we have the authority to follow up on that and to make sure that happens.
Absolutely, they will not get TCO until, or CVO until that's completed.
Appreciate that. And then my last question on here, I saw the original zoning for commercial use on this was 2003. Palm Valley Phase Five, do you remember when those homes were built by chance?
After 2003.
Yeah.
I believe '05 to '06, but sometime after 2003. They were zoned at the exact same time.
They were zoned at the exact same time, but they were built and occupied after the zoning. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's the only questions I have.
Okay, let's see, next up? Go ahead, Brian.
So the, I'm trying to find, is the setback, is it 50 feet from the property line to the houses? Or is it 30?
The, there is a minimum setback of 30, but it's based on building height as well. In this case, there's a landscape buffer, then a 30-foot setback, and then the building begins. So the building is closer to 80 to 100 feet from the nearest residential.
Okay, and is there a, the drive-through, is there, was there a sound study or anything? Do we know how far it'll travel? That was the biggest concern, I think, with the McDonald's, for example.
Yes, there's a stipulation regarding that. So if the decibel levels of that speaker exceed a certain level off the property, then we would follow up with code enforcement.
Okay, how often do we check that? Is that just when there's a complaint?
If somebody complained during 311, we would, we would go out to the site and investigate that matter.
Okay. And then do we know, I know I saw some, some, they give the companies right here on the, on the thing here. Do we, are we, do we think those are going to be Sherman Williams and Starbucks?
According to the applicant at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Sherman Williams is a likely tenant, and Starbucks would not be a tenant.
Would not be a tenant?
Would not be a tenant.
Oh, so it would be something else there.
Be a different drive-through user. So this use permit is only approving any drive-through user.
Okay, okay. And then, okay, yeah, I like the style of, of units. I think we need more, more spaces for these things on every, on the corners that we have. We just don't have enough space for small business owners to, or even other business owners to set up shop here in Goodyear. So I think this is good. I, yeah, I like it, so I think it'll be good. I like that the sound should push away from the residents, really, and then, and that the decimals is going to be in check as well. So, and I see the screening wall there also, which is good. So is that a stipulation as well in there, the screening wall?
There's not a screening wall on the residential side. There's just a general design guideline requirement that there's a screening wall along the drive-through lane. So there's a three-foot screen wall between them and the McDonald's. But the residential properties already have a perimeter wall there.
I think I see a little mini-screen wall. Maybe that's just for the kiosk or something there.
Oh, by the board, yes, there's a little screen wall behind the board. That's not stipulated, but that would, the site plan approval would need to be in substantial performance to this here.
Okay, and then, what else here? And I don't know what it's going to be. You said it's not going to be a Starbucks, but I'm just trying to think the design coming in and out of here. I'm not sure how to be, well, the other, other one with the drive-through, the queuing. So people should be able to get out. Was there another exit out of there? Go back to the other one you're at?
So let's say somebody were coming from East Indian School. They would right-turn lane into the site. They'd go north, and they would turn into the drive-through lane here, and then they would navigate out of the site. If they wanted to, for example, get on the 303, they would leave the site and go back on Indian School, stop at the light, continue. Or they would leave the site, go to Cervel, make a left turn to get to Indian School, or make a right turn to go to the employment PB 303.
Okay, and then go back to the other one you just had up with the queuing of the cars. So, okay, I'm trying to think, if anybody gets, will get stuck in the parking structure there? If they got, if they want to go into the area there, but I think it should be fine. You have 14 cars there, so.
If they wanted to go to McDonald's, for example, they would just continue along the path?
I'm just thinking about getting trapped in the, if I'm parking my car and I can't get out because the, because of the drive-through line's so long. I've been in a line like that before where you, you're getting, you get trapped. So, so, but I, I think it'll be fine. The 14 cars is, I think, is a pretty good queue, so. All right, and that's all the questions I had. I think it'll be good, so I'll vote yes, so thank you.
Vice Mayor?
My question is from the storage unit that's going in behind it. It's been approved, and is it going to be built soon where it's compatible with what's going up in front of it?
The use permit for that has since expired. They did not move forward with their building plans, so they would need to come back into the city and restart the construction.
So then the property behind this site layout that we're looking at is open to whatever else?
Any C1 use, yes.
Okay, good, thank you. That's my only question. Thanks, Christian.
Councilmember Kano?
This was zoned C1 in 2003, which has been established. Was the reason for that is because of the Luke Air Force, the sound contours? Is, I feel like when we covered the McDonald's, there was a reason why this was commercial. Can you recall?
The contours do go very close to this area. I'm not certain if it's within the residential, if residential is restricted there or not, but typically between a more industrial use and a residential use, you'll see a buffer of some sort of commercial use.
Okay, good. I just want to say I thought that your stipulations were really well thought out with consideration for the neighbors. Very significant queuing line. I think that will address a lot of problems we see perhaps in other places. And I wanted to ask about the air scrubber requirement. I know that that came up for McDonald's. Is that a new, a new thing, or is that something we've done routinely?
The McDonald's at this location was the first time the city entertained a stipulation like that. Because of the proximity of this McDonald's to other uses that were being considered in Goodyear, that stipulation was also included, that Cervel and Yuma McDonald's. And by the nature of this being closer to residential than the McDonald's, staff felt it appropriate to have it in here as well.
I thank you for that. That's all.
Councilwoman Gillis?
Christian, didn't that, didn't that air scrubber or food scrubber, or whatever it is, didn't it break down for a while when it was first installed, if I remember, and they had to redo it?
There was, there was an issue with the fire rating. So they purchased another air scrubber because it wouldn't function in the design of that building. So that since has been, code enforcement went out there, monitored that situation between code and building. They got the scrubber back up and running.
So everything's good now?
It is in compliance.
Now, whoever goes in, if it's Now, the, whoever goes in, if it's coffee or whoever it is, they don't have to have one, though, because they're not making stuff, right, as far as pastries and stuff? Unless they do that, then they have to put one in? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. It'll be user-based. So when they come in for their building permits and we look at tenant improvements, we'll see who the user is, we'll ask questions about their operations, and if their operations are going to generate food nuisances, we would require the scrubber to be installed.
Perfect. Okay, now can I talk with Madison? Is that okay?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good afternoon. I'm not as loud as Christian. I think that's on. Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmember, for your record, Madison League, 1850 North Central.
Hi, sweetie. So you and I were talking about some stuff. Are we not getting a Starbucks? For some reason, I thought we were. That's what we had talked about in our, in our meeting, was a coffee. Because I know there's some people that were asking me about coffee. They're excited Starbucks has coffee, but it's not quite the same thing.
They use, I think everyone will still be happy because the user they're talking to right now is Bosa, who does, you know, primarily donuts and coffee.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay, so we are still talking about a coffee place there?
That is what we're talking about, yes. But like Christian said, that's not tied to and contingent on the approval, but that is the user that we're talking about right now.
Okay, and so, and so Sherman Williams and Bosa is what you're saying, right? Is there anything else that we know at this point that's gonna go in?
I don't know who would go in the middle. Some potential users that have been mentioned is maybe some type of juice bar, maybe a nail salon, you know, something smaller like that. That's kind of a community-type use.
Okay, so, so everything is pretty much what you talked to us about back in January, right?
Good memory.
Yeah, well, and so pretty much that's what we're talking about? Everything is still the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it was pretty cut and dried then. I'm good. I'm supportive of this. Thanks.
You know what? Good discussion for all the members on this board here. I don't have anything to add. You did really good with the, how you got this thing set up, you know, as far as the queuing and whatever, so I'm on board with that. So with that, if you would, go ahead and open up the voting. Oh, oh, hold on before you do that. Councilmember Beckles, did you have any questions?
No, all my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and open up the voting.
Councilmember Beckles, please state your vote for the record.
Aye.
Thank you. It passes 7-0. Does council have any comments, commendations, reports on current events or requests for future items? Go ahead.
I would just like to give a shout out and a big congratulations to Madison League on, on your new baby that's coming. I'm really excited for you. Congratulations, honey.
Go ahead.
Do we do the, oh, we want the city manager first or after?
No, city manager after you.
Okay, so the first one will be, so I attended the Goodyear Airport at the Oktoberfest. So there was a, I think the, from LA, I think the consulate general of Germany was there from LA, so that was kinda neat. And then a lot of, a lot of people are very excited that the event came back with the, utilize the hangar and everything like that after, I think, a five-year hiatus, so it was good. I went there, so it was good. Something else I did, then I have something for the city manager, but I'll wait for the turn to come up.
Wally?
Thank you. Well, the mayor and I and Councilmember Kano enjoyed the Gane Festival this Saturday night, last Saturday night, sorry. We were the judges at the Halloween costume contest, which is the most fun that you have the entire year as a council member. We had the most creative costumes ever, but the best of show was this mother who actually made a seashell and had her baby girl as Ariel in a fish costume with bubbles and music, and then she was all dressed up, and it was just wonderful. But we wanted to thank everyone that came out. It was a wonderful crowd and a lot of fun. The weather could not have been better for us to do that. And then on Sunday, I had the pleasure of meeting with 150 Pebble Creek residents getting ready for our home tour, which is next Saturday, and we're excited about that. And I also wanted to compliment the Parks and Recs on an outstanding job that they did for Gane. It was laid out beautifully, and everyone had a good time. It was easy to park, easy to get food for a change, and it was really a very wonderful evening, so thank you, everyone who was involved in it.
Okay, city manager, you got anything?
I got something for her.
Yeah, oh, you got something for her. Go ahead. You had something for her.
Yeah, so I had some residents talking about, off of Straight Mountain, I guess doing some construction right there. I guess there's a left-hand turn to get down south from the Walgreens where that, the light, I don't know what road that is, the light right there. I guess there's a lot of queuing and the light timing is really, really short. So I don't know if we can do something to, to accommodate that for this time period that the construction's going on right now. It's not an always-time thing, but maybe we can, we can adapt it for that, so people can get out of the safe way down, down the mountain. And the other thing is, I just wanna say thank you to, I think, city man, I know you're not the one who did it, but I think the city manager, I think she's working on changing this, the road into Goodyear High School to Mavericks Way. So thank you for working on that for me also. So I think that's all the things that I had. Thank you.
Comments from the manager?
Well, thank you, yes, and we will, looking at, at staff, we will follow up and, and look into those things, so thank you. Rachel Garcia, deputy city manager, this evening. Mayor and council, I'm, I'm here to share some updates on weekend festivities. So I'm, I'm pleased to report that Fall Festival was held this Saturday, as you heard, at the Goodyear Ballpark, drawing an estimated 7,700 attendees. That was a 17% increase from last year. Guests enjoyed a wide range of activities, including bounce houses, character meet-and-greets, a haunted trail, a DJ dance party, and trick-or-treating with more than 250,000 pieces of candies and toys distributed throughout the night. The event also participated in the teal pumpkin project. We had five of the 13 booths exclusively offering toys for our children with food allergies and sensitivities. And we were hoping to create a more inclusive and welcoming environment for all members of our community that way. You did hear from Vice Mayor that she and Mayor Pizzillo, as well as Councilmember Kano, served as judges for the, the costume event. And I heard five categories received awards, plus a People's Choice Award. And I think you already heard the best of show or the best in costume went to Ursula and Ariel, so very, very cute, very fun. Make a Difference Day is also celebrated annually on the fourth Saturday of October, encouraging individuals and communities to engage in volunteerism and acts of kindness. This year, it took place on October 25th. Goodyear coordinated almost 250 volunteers, making up 17 groups. Our volunteers donated 1,000 hours to 10 projects, and the volunteer hours were valued at approximately $35,000 if we added it up. So just incredible. We wanna thank all of our staff and volunteers for making, making these events possible over the weekend. And of course, thank you to mayor and council for all of your support.
Thank you, and you know, on that event, one thing I was really impressed about, the making of the beds. I don't know how many beds. Do we, we get a report of how many beds? How many?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six beds they made there for Goodyear for, for families, so. You know, that's one of our great events that we have, where the public comes out and gives back to the community, so that was just awesome. So with that, we have the next meeting, November 3rd. No further business. This meeting is over.